I'd like to call the October meeting of the Board of Education to order. First, we'll begin with an invocation, Ms. Hethridge.
Good evening. Education is helping the child realize his potential. Jimmy, Jimmy challenged his teacher day after day. The lesson was always interrupted to deal with some outburst or rule infraction. Mrs. Jenkins tried strict adherence to her discipline plan. She tried ignoring his behavior. She even tried bribing Jimmy. All these solutions were short-lived. They were Band-Aids when only holistic care would do. As all teachers do, Mrs. Jenkins knew her students quite well. She knew Jimmy's likes and dislikes, strengths and weaknesses, gifts and talents, and she decided to try a combination approach that would address the whole child and not just his behavior. Since Jimmy was artistic, Mrs. Jenkins gave him the responsibility of making posters. Since he worked better alone than in a group, she assigned him specific tasks at group times. And since he liked attention, she called on him for answers even before he could raise his hand. In time, Jimmy's outburst decreased. His productivity increased. Mrs. Jenkins had found a better way for Jimmy and for herself. Try to always remember, your students are more than a set of behaviors. They are people who have needs, desires, and preferences. When problems arise, look past the situation and into the child. Know your students well enough to identify what they need, then give it to them. Thank you.
Okay, next, Pledge of Allegiance. Kealan, have you ever led the Pledge of Allegiance? Yeah. Okay. All right. I guess Sidney would be next then. Would you all please rise?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This month's school spotlight is on Central Elementary, and I'll call Principal Carrie Chapel forward.
Good evening Chairman Dobney, Superintendent Stefanik, members of the board and guests. I thank you for inviting Central Elementary to present this evening. It was my intention to have Deidra Simmons, our district preschool director and coordinator, to be here to present for you this evening. Because it was early in the year, we had a conversation and I said, "Deidra, have you ever presented on the preschool program?" She said, "No," and so win-win, yay, great. As you can see, Deidra is not here this evening for an even better reason. Her husband Troy got a call today that he is potentially right in line. He's been at the top of the transplant list for our kidney, and they got the call today to get their stuff together. So there was a lot of cheering today at Central, a lot of jumping up and down, a little bit of tears, a lot of love and excitement. And then she gives the board presentation and I said, "I'll just read your PowerPoint." So here I am to read the PowerPoint. And it's a shame that Deidra can't be here to present this for you because Deidra Simmons has such a passion and a calling for early intervention and for people, little people, especially little people who might just need a little bit of extra support. And you're going to see that. She just basically kind of did the past, the present, and the future vision of the preschool program in her presentation, and I'm just going to kind of walk through that with you. I am armed to try to answer any questions that you have, although if I don't know the answer, I'll be glad to find them out for you. So preschool services in Carratt County began in 1991. At that time, they served only students ages three to five years with disabilities. They were located behind Carratt County Middle School in a trailer, serving six to eight children with one teacher and two teacher assistants, and transportation was provided by parents or contract drivers. From 1993 to 1995, there was one developmental preschool serving only students with disabilities. 1993 to 1997, Developmental Day, I'm sorry, Developmentally Delayed Preschool Learning Lab had high school students who were considered working in daycare or going to school to be teachers. They could get a course credit with the preschool. Students were not exposed to peers and were in their most restrictive environment being housed at the high school. So they requested to be housed at Central Elementary School. That way, those students would see your typical younger student. In 1997, they were moved to the Gray House on my campus, which is now our data office, and it became the new DD preschool. We continued to serve only students with disabilities, but class size began to increase from six students to 10 students. They also opened their first More at Four preschool, serving typically developing students at age four, and their first classroom housed 10 students. In 1998, they had a surge in population of students with significant needs and had to operate a morning and afternoon preschool, serving three-year-olds in the morning and four-year-olds in the afternoon, and they served these 17 students with one teacher and two assistants. More at Four continued to receive state funding, and the class size grew from 10 students to 14, including some students with disabilities. In 1999, they decided to become a licensed preschool and were moved out of the Gray House and into the school building as we exceeded the recommended floor space per child. And they continued to operate one developmentally delayed preschool and one More at Four continuing to grow to numbers until 2009. And the year 2000 was when I was first exposed to the program, as that was my first year of teaching, and Central was one of my schools, and I taught. Buck Green said, "You're going to teach a block of music to the self-contained class," and I did that, and then about three days later, the preschool class joined self-contained class, and we all had music together, which was a good time. So that was my first introduction to Deidra and the program. 2009 to 2016, they continued to operate two developmentally delayed preschools with a maximum class size of 12 students per class. They expanded the NC pre-K then to Jarvisburg, so then we had two, one at Central and one at Jarvisburg, serving 18 students at Jarvisburg and 18 at Central. They're a little out of order here. 2016, they relocated that program from Jarvisburg to Griggs because Jarvisburg School got too full with K-5 students, so they moved the preschool to Griggs that had a little more room. 17-18 school year, we had a large amount of developmentally delayed students found to be eligible and had to open a third developmental delay classroom in November of 2017. That was last year. We are currently serving 23 developmentally delayed students and two EC classrooms at Central, 18 NC pre-K students at Central, 18 NC pre-K students at Griggs, and this year, we opened a new developmental delay classroom at Griggs and are serving seven students there. Each year for the last five years, we have reached capacity in those developmental delay classrooms of 12 prior to December. The NC pre-K waiting list continues to be between 10 to 14 additional students for each class without us being able to serve those students with increase in military families in our community. In order to get into the NC pre-K program, you have to, they can be military or they have low income or are at risk in some manner. So we have a waiting list of 10 to 14 outside of what we're currently serving. The future for the preschool program, and Deidra's eyes here. We are looking for outside resources and funding to be able to reach most students that would be eligible for services. Like I said, it's a passion and a calling for her, so she's looking for any way possible. She would like to see pre-K classrooms based elsewhere besides Central because it would help with the transportation issue as we do transfer students from the Moyac line all the way to Central. She has applied for a developmental day license at Central to assist with EC needs of developmental students. We are waiting approval of that license. So I asked her about this one specifically because I figured, hmm, you might have a question about it. So developmental day license provides additional funds in assisting with supplies and materials or staffing when we provide services for children who have high adaptive needs. We have applied for the license, and once the license comes through, we can apply for the funding. It attaches to teachers with birth-to-K license, and the class size cannot exceed 12, and that is an annual application. And basically, Ms. Margie at the state level has said that we qualify with the programs that we have. We just had to apply for a different licensure. She's also looking to provide and researching, to offer preschool to staff children and possibly local government agencies' children, a fee-for-service pre-K. If you're not aware or don't have families with small children in your circle of life, Carratt County does not have a very strong preschool daycare population for anybody who works. Most of the preschools that are in our community are half-day and not every day of the week. So it's very difficult for people with young kids to find very good childcare. So she's looking to be able to offer that maybe to our staff or local government agencies, and that would all be funded through payment. They would just pay for that, and that would cover the teachers, et cetera. And she's also looking for an additional developmental pre-K soon because as prior to December, as numbers from our early intervention, birth of three-year-olds transitioned to preschool. So we work closely with the early interventionists in our area, and they give us names of students, and then we start screening them, and once they turn three years old, we then start to provide services for them because they age out of that early intervention. And we find children, it seems, almost every day. So that's it. Do you have any questions that I might be able to answer for you?
I'm telling you that what she's got planned for staff's children, I think, would really help us draw teachers.
It would, and I remember before the NC pre-K program became as big as it was, that one time was even a possible option, because I know I was approached when my children were little, and what comfort that would bring to know that my kid is in this safe environment and on the same schedule that I'm on. So yes, that would be a big draw.
And I've visited those classrooms, and it's delightful to watch those children. You've visited them too, haven't you, Dr. Dobney?
Oh, yeah. I have a special appreciation for preschool handicapped teachers.
You helped, did you help for the Christmas?
A couple of years ago, when you had your teacher Christmas luncheon, I volunteered to go into the pre-K handicap figuring, huh, it's going to be a piece of cake. It's like, those kids ran me ragged.
He's still in therapy after that. A couple of years later.
That's, preschool's my happy place, so if it's been a bad day, I'm usually on the floor somewhere. I can't get through an observation that my ears aren't checked or, you know, my arm measured or the blocks are rotten built around me or something. They are sweet, it's a good time.
That is a sweet age.
Yeah.
Please give Deidra our love and best wishes, and especially for her husband and his transplant. Hope everything goes well.
Yes, I contacted her before I came in, and she said they still have up to 24 hours to know for sure, but they're getting their stuff together.
Just for board member and audience member information, that transition to, from transition early intervention to age three, that identified population, we have to provide services, intervention services to them if they're identified, right?
That is correct. That is correct. They then, through the early intervention process, then they are given an IEP, and we, as the district that they live in, are required to provide services for them. So that's, that's the urgency with Deidra, is that we can't tell them no. We have to, we have to find something for them.
So once we meet those class capacities, if students keep coming, then we have to open another developmentally delayed preschool program, so.
Part below.
Yes, and so we have to go through classroom inspection process by the state EC department and special and preschool department, and so if she sees those numbers coming, we'll probably have to do that mid-year.
We're ready. Having to go through mid-year last year, I was ready on the ground running this year to be ready for it.
Oh, yeah. It just, it amazed me. This is the second state I've been involved in, and even in an active school, the classroom has to be, you know, inspected and has to be relicensed for preschool, and so it could have been used for education for decades and decades. It doesn't pass preschool muster unless they come out and license it themselves.
Before I go to the next agenda item, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we lost another staff member a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Brenda Norris, who was at data processing?
Data processing coordinator, yes. She was in charge of the registration center.
All right. Anyway, I'd like to take a moment of silence for her and her family. Thank you. Next, approval of the agenda. Before I ask for approval, I would like to pull out from the consent agenda, let's see, items two, three, four, five, and six. Those are all second readings of policies. And I would like to place those, plus the greenhouse discussion that we did not have at the work session after item E, where Superintendent Stefanik will go over the safety committee recommendations. So it will be greenhouse discussion, then we'll deal with policies 3410, 6420, 9120, and 5010, and 1710. And we will vote on each one of those at the end since this is the second reading. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, public comment session. We do have one person that signed up, and it happens to be the newly named principal at JP Napp Early College, Ms. Denise Fallon.
I have a, is this on? Oh, I have a student with me tonight, Jacob, if you'll come on up. So the reason I'm here tonight during this portion of the board meeting, we got some information earlier in the week, and we were asked to do this during an awards ceremony, which we don't have until January, and we just didn't want to wait till then. So here we are. Jacob, thanks for coming tonight.
No problem.
So of course, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. Each fall, all 11th grade students at JP Napp take the PSAT. And the PSAT is a practice test for the SAT, obviously, but exemplary scores qualify students for the National Merit Scholarship Program. This year, college board notified us that one of our students had been recognized as a commended student. And so again, it is my honor and privilege to announce today that Jacob Hurwick has been named as a commended student in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. And I have to be honest with you, Jacob, you're the only student that I can remember that's got this honor, so congratulations to you. About 35,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue on in the competition for the National Merit Scholarship, commended students place among the top 50,000 scorers on that PSAT. The young men and women being named as commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. These students represent a valuable national resource, and recognizing their accomplishments as well as their key role in their schools is important in their academic development. Again, congratulations to Jacob, and I'm just going to let Jacob take a second and tell you a little bit about what he's studying. He is one of our students that's going to graduate this year with an associate degree. So Jacob, again, congratulations. Tell these guys who you are and what you're studying.
So I am a senior at JP Napp. I am currently pursuing an associate's in engineering at the College of the Albemarle. I am set to graduate this spring, and right now, I'm taking like all classes at the Elizabeth City campus. I don't get to see my lovely high school that often anymore.
So I'm glad you're here tonight. What, now, have you applied to your colleges yet?
Not yet, but the, I'm planning on applying to NC State, and the early action deadline is the 15th, so I will very soon be applying to that.
Good for you.
And just to follow up, next week, Jacob, is Countdown to College Week at JP Napp. So if you don't have COA on Monday or Tuesday, you can come in and get help with those applications. So I'll see you then. So here you go, Jacob. It's your letter of commendation. Again, congratulations. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Now, can I just say that I know Jacob is one of the one people who I know works the hardest that I have ever known, and especially out of the engineering, I'd say he's probably the, one of the hardest workers.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Once again, congratulations, Jacob. So next, student board member reports. Kealan, Sidney, Colin, and Mallory.
Hello, board. I'd like to offer one more congratulations to Jacob and get right into it. So first up is Moyac Elementary. What an eventful fall already at Moyac Elementary. We've had Master Huang of Moyac come teach students the art of Taekwondo during PE classes. Channel 13 News came to observe the MES PTA's penny wars in support of one of our sweet Panthers who has a brain mass. And of course, we're continuing to hashtag learn, play, dream, grow each and every day. We hope you make plans to attend the MES Annual Fall Festival on October 26, which will go from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's sure to be a fun family event. Next is Jarvisburg Elementary. JES kicked off the school year with a back-to-school night and PJ Jam. East Carolina radio was on-hand to broadcast live from the event. Kids stayed in the gym to dance the night away while parents were able to visit classrooms to see firsthand all of the amazing things happening at JES. It was our largest turnout ever. On October 19, Roanoke Island Festival Events will be supplementing our fourth graders' understanding of NC history with an assembly at 2:00 p.m. Our Title I Reading Night will coincide with our annual Read-A-Thon fundraiser sponsored by our PTA on October 25, 2018. We will host a trick-or-treat event in which students will learn a literacy trick, a trick for a treat in the classroom. Dinner will be served for parents and students. It will be a fun night for sure. More information will be forthcoming. We hope to see you all there. And finally, for me, Central Elementary. So Central Elementary had their first Title I night of the year with a learning fair that included fair food, the book fair, fair games for students, and learning presentations for families. More than 150, or 140 were in attendance. October 18, our PTO is having their general meeting and bingo night. October will include our annual costume parade and PBIS Reward Day on the 31st. And with that, I turn it over to Sidney.
Hello, I'd like to start with Charbro Elementary School, who hosted their, who hosted Master Huang Taekwondo studio during PE classes this past Monday and Tuesday. Master Huang and his team led students in Taekwondo exercises and focused it on character building. All students and parents are invited this Saturday for our Kicking Saturday Event for Free in SES Gym. Progress reports will go home Friday, October 5. Picture Day will be Wednesday, October 10. Charbro's Title I team has rescheduled our kickoff to a Great Year Event for Wednesday, October 10 at 5:45. Come join us for dinner and information regarding our school. Charbro will participate in the Red Ribbon Week, October 22 through October 26. More information to come regarding these weekly events. Next, I will go on to Griggs Elementary School. The mystery of the lost colony is being presented to our students tomorrow. The Mallards will have their first PBIS recognition on Tuesday, October 9. Griggs Elementary School will host their first Harry Potter Family Fest Title I night on Friday, October 12. Please come out and join us for a fun event, including learning activities, crafts, snacks, and snacks. Red Ribbon Week activities will take place October 22 through the 26. On October 31, students will have the opportunity to dress as their favorite character, book characters. And now I'll pass it to Colin.
First, we're going to start off with, oh, man, Nats Island Elementary. Nats Island Elementary is looking forward to an exciting start to the fall season. Progress reports will be going home on the 5th. Our book fair is running through Monday, October 8. Bike Rodeo Week for the 3rd through 5th grades will begin Monday, October 8 also. Students can make memories with their beautiful smiles with Picture Day on October 19. The Annual Fall Festival is on Saturday, October 20, from 12 to 2. Come join us for some fall fun. Next, from Carratt County Middle. Despite our two weeks off, the students and staff at CCMS are hard at work. Our teachers had a very productive teacher workday and want to thank the board for giving them valuable time to perfect their craft. Also, our entire certified staff is participating in a year-long book study on growth mindset. Our Raider athletes continue to demonstrate great athleticism and sportsmanship as they compete against other teams in the conference. We had our first school dance last Friday, which was a lot of fun. The students and staff at CCMS are currently participating in a drive that will support both Havlock and Tucker Creek Middle Schools in Craven County. We are collecting books, school supplies, and backpacks. Feel free to drop donations off in the bins in our lobby. Finally, we have our fall book fair going on. Stop by and support our media center by purchasing some books. Next, we have Moyac Middle School. Moyac Middle School had the first school dance in the year last Friday night. Over 400 students were in attendance. They danced the night away and had a great time. The Junior Beta Club, FBLA, and Four Club are currently collecting items for Hurricane Florence victims. FFA had their first field trip on Wednesday afternoon to CCHS to attend leadership training. The students are excited about opportunities in FFA and are looking forward to their next field trip later in October. Next, I hand it off to Mallory.
All right, I'm going to start with the JP Napp Early College. SGO sponsor Mr. Chuck Martin and student representatives will travel to Craven County Early College tomorrow, Friday, to deliver hurricane relief supplies collected by the SGO students and staff there. Our colleagues at Craven Early College related to tell us that the early college alone, they had 20 students and families that were majorly impacted by the storm and three staff members who lost everything. COA will be closed on Monday and Tuesday for staff professional development. Monday to Thursday of next week is the SGO Spartan Spirit Week. Next week is also the Countdown to College Week 2018 at the JP Napp Early College. Monday and Tuesday, there will be one-on-one assistance for seniors from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. with college application and essays, the CFNC Common App, RDS, and FSA ID. Wednesday is FAFSA night for seniors and parents from 4:00 to 7:00 at JP Napp. Thursday is the Transfer Summit for grades 12 and 13 from 4:00 to 7:00 in the Media Center. The topic is understanding how COA credits transfer to a university. On Wednesday, the PSAT will be given for the 11th graders from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And next Friday is an optional teacher workday at JP Napp Early College. Sophomores will be job shadowing all over the community this day. At Carratt County High, they continue to accept donations of supplies to assistos in Craven County so heavily impacted. in Craven County so heavily impacted by Hurricane Florence. Our first carload of donations made its way to them this past weekend. CCHS was honored to host the Northeast NC Chapters of FFA for its annual fall symposium. Some three hundred students, accompanied by their faculty sponsors, were in attendance. They enjoyed a wonderful open house from five to seven PM on Thursday, September twenty-seventh, where parents enjoyed meeting new teachers and learning more about student activities and community outreach organizations. Food trucks were even onsite to assist families needing to purchase dinners at the supper hour. Students continuing to thrive, the students are continuing to thrive in our fall sports and extracurriculars with homecoming slated for Friday, October nineteenth. That evening, the Knights will host the Bears of Hurtford County High. That's it.
Great. Kealan, Sidney, Colin, and Mallory, thank you. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, Safety Committee Recommendations. Superintendent Stefani?
Thank you, Dr. Dovny. Just commenting about the Moyac Middle School's dance.
Four hundred.
Major league, major league line of cars, uh, you know, dropping, uh, people off. I was, uh, taking care of an errand, uh, up on the north end, and it, it looked like a, uh, you know, like a concert at a, at an amphitheater or something. There were cars just going and going. I mean, I'm going like, ah, the first dance. That's right, the first dance. So it was, uh, so it was very well attended on the, on the north side. I was asked tonight to, uh, give an update on, uh, our Safety Committee and the work that we did, um, uh, last spring. Um, we had several, uh, community members. We had members of the, um, county commissioners. We had, um, Sheriff Bykert. Uh, we had, uh, the community members that were there. All of them seemed to have, uh, a, a major amount of law enforcement background from, uh, local law enforcement agencies all the way up to the FBI. So we had, uh, we had some, uh, pretty, uh, expert, um, folks in attendance at the Safety Committee. And we came up with three, uh, recommendations that we wanted to target. Uh, first recommendation was, uh, an SRO in every school in the district, advancing up from the, the three buildings that, uh, we had, um, as of last year. We are continuing, uh, to brainstorm ideas on how to make that happen, uh, and, uh, trying to partner with the Sheriff's Department to see if, um, uh, there's some shift work that ha, can happen and, and we can get some more, uh, deputies in the schools. But as of now, um, as mentioned previously, we did receive, um, a safety grant, uh, from the state of North Carolina, uh, for an additional, um, SRO. Uh, and what that does is that provides half, uh, of the, uh, the salary of, of an SRO to bring in. So we'll have, uh, both middle schools and both high schools, uh, having their own designated, uh, SROs. Uh, right now, we've got kind of a, a round robin, uh, SRO activity till they get the shifts and the personnel, uh, the way they want them. Uh, and then, uh, when it's finished, then we should have, uh, four designated folks for our, our four buildings.
Very good.
Um, second recommendation was, uh, what I like to, uh, lovingly call the Jenna Locks, uh, which are the, uh, the extra classroom and, and, uh, support room, uh, bar locks, uh, that, uh, are on the, the classroom doors and, and pretty much all the doors in the schools, except for maybe storage closets. Uh, and, uh, those are installed. Um, they're, um, Matt's not here right now, but, um, the, the biggest concern was where to put the, the actual device, because it's just like a, I'll call it a U, a U-bar or something like that. Where to actually store it so that, um, mischievous students, uh, may not try to take it, uh, and, and do something with it as, uh, you know, as maybe a prank to the classroom, uh, but it could at the same time be close enough to the door, uh, that if it needs to be used for safety reasons, it could, uh, uh, it could be utilized and, and accessed easily. So, um, the actual brackets are on the doors and in the floors, and the devices are in the rooms. We're just trying to get the, uh, the storage, uh, a little, uh, I think they're plastic cases, uh, attached to each classroom. Uh, the commissioners, uh, were generous enough to reimburse the school district. Um, that process, uh, I just got an email the other day that I'm supposed to do something with that, uh, to get the reimbursement back, so I've gotta send some documentation over to the, uh, County Manager and get that on the next agenda, and then we'll get the money back for the, uh, for the Jenna Locks. So that was appreciated, uh, from the county commissioners. The last, uh, item, and, uh, some of you experienced that this evening. Uh, the, uh, the, the locking doors at, uh, at all of our facilities, and you have to press the safety doorbell to get in, uh, but it doesn't work that well if there aren't any folks at the desks where the, uh, the doorbell rings, uh, you can't get in, uh, after hours, but, uh, all of our campuses are locked. Uh, we have, uh, uh, we have buzzer systems, uh, to notify the, the office that you're there, and then you have to, uh, get buzzed in after you identify, and we can, uh, be sure that you're there for positive reasons. Um, we are in the process of going through a staff ID, um, process, and then your ID card, uh, will be, um, your access key to the school. Uh, some of the folks already have, uh, in, in, in a precursor to the IDs, they have key fobs. And, uh, I was with Mr. Mullins yesterday as we started our, uh, capacity tours. Uh, we started those yesterday, and he strolled right up to the door and waved the fob, uh, you know, by his shoulder, and the door popped open, and, uh, and we walked, uh, straight in. That's what the, um, ID cards will be able to do. Uh, and so, uh, staff, um, won't have to use the buzzer system to get into other schools. They'll have the, the staff access card. The trick to that, first of all, getting everybody's picture taken, uh, for ID cards, but, uh, the other part of it is, we have to code each person's ID card based on what type of access they're given. Um, so some will be given, you know, the essential personnel will be given twenty-four-seven access to certain buildings. Other folks will be on some kind of a, uh, less than twenty-four-hour, um, access, uh, piece, and if you're a, a staff member at, say, Moyac Elementary School, your ID pass won't be good to get you into the high school. Uh, and so we have to put all those codes into the computer system, and so, uh, the ID cards, uh, will work. The first preliminary target was by Christmas break. Nah, I don't know, uh, if we'll, if we'll make that yet, but, uh, we'll give it a shot to put those in. So those are the first three, uh, recommendations, uh, from the, um, Safety Committee, and two of them fully implemented, and the, uh, SRO additions to the school district were on our way, uh, with one additional SRO, uh, as of this fall.
Can the ID cards be canceled through the computer? So say if staff member left?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, all updates, uh, can happen, uh, probably in, in real time. So if somebody, uh, resigns and just about the same time we cancel their email account, we can, uh, turn off their ID cards too.
Will the ID cards allow teachers to come out on weekends that wanna work in their classroom, or?
Yes. Um, I, I had, uh, uh, some familiarity with this with a, a previous district. You just put, um, um, well, I guess what you could call non-alarm times, um, at the schools. So it may not be, you know, if some people like to come out at like nine PM, uh, they might not be able to do that on a weekend, but you might be able to come out, let's say, eight to six, something like that, in that range, and, and your ID card would work, and then the alarm systems would go on, and then the card wouldn't work, uh, on those off times. We'll try to give as big a window as we can on the weekends, because we know people like to, to do that. They have some quiet, uh, minutes to get some things done, and so we'll, we'll make that available to them.
I'm just happy that we're implementing these safety, um, items, all the schools. You know, it's been a while coming, so I'm just really happy to hear the news.
Couple other things, uh, so I don't have to say it during, uh, comments at the end. Um, we are four for four. Uh, I believe I said the last time we were three for three, uh, on the safety grants. Uh, we were notified this week that our partner agency, uh, got the fourth one for, uh, mental health services, uh, and it's also for, um, staff training, uh, where they'll train teachers on, um, being able to spot early signs of, um, you know, anxiety or, um, situational, you know, depression or, or some changes in, in student personality so that they could, uh, possibly get a mental health services, uh, in, in a quicker timeframe. So, SRO, um, extra social worker for on-staff assistance, um, school, school, school safety equipment, and so, uh, we can add to, uh, any camera systems where we think there might be some blind spots, uh, in the schools. We can add some, uh, camera equipment there, and then the partnership grant with, uh, um, a community, uh, mental health provider. So we put in, we took the time to put in four grants, and we were, we were granted all four of them from the state.
That's great.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, next item, greenhouse discussion, Ms. Rose.
Okay. I've talked to, uh, Mr. Monroe and Ms. Swain and Mr. Meads and some FFA students, one that lives at my house, and their thoughts are that we need to go on and move on this project. You know, we, we, we've been talking about it since May, and we've been before the commissioners, and the commissioners, several of them, along with the County Manager, have indicated that they support a new greenhouse. They have also said that they are not willing to fund the whole thing. They want us to have some ownership in it, and, um, uh, there's been some questions about why was not, why was this not put into the budget? But the plan last year was to get a grant. You know, you're talking about grants, and they had it all written up, and only to discover that that grant, it had, it was only for mobile materials. So the greenhouse is a permanent structure, so it did not qualify for the grant. So at that point, the FFA group and the teachers started looking for other avenues, not wanting to wait another year, because the situation with their old structure, it's, it's in a mess, um, it's in bad condition, it's an outdated design, there's rotting wood structure frame, it's out, the polycarbonate is out of date. They're not able to grow a lot of things, like mums. They had a call this week, someone wanted three hundred mums. They have no mums. They, they don't have the facility to grow them. They can't grow poinsettias. That's a big fundraiser for them, but they have to buy them and just add a little tiny bit of money for profit. Uh, our neighboring counties, one of them, Pasquotank, I believe, had a fifty-fifty agreement between the Board of Education and the County Commissioners to fund their project for their new greenhouse, which was in nineteen ninety-seven. Both of our ag teachers, Ms. Swain and Mr. Meads, went through that program, and it benefited them greatly. In fact, Ms. Swain went on to pursue a degree in horticulture from, she was so interested, um, and gained so much from that greenhouse. Currituck County is an agricultural-based community, and our goal is to prepare students for the workplace and to have the opportunity to stay and live and work in Currituck County. We feel like this greenhouse might encourage that in some way with some students. Time is a factor due to high school scheduling. This semester, they did not offer horticulture because of the condition of the greenhouse. We're hoping that, uh, I'm sure they'll offer horticulture in a, and just do what they can, if, if we don't have it in place for them. The sequence of classes, those children that took horticulture last year wanna take, well, number one, they wanna take number two this year. I have a daughter that wanted to take Horticulture One this semester, but it wasn't offered. Sun Energy has been contacted multiple times by Abby, who spoke to us originally about it, and finally today, they did commit to a dollar figure. They said possibly five thousand dollars, um, that they will give, but that's kinda contingent upon their presence in the community. I think that there's an ordinance coming up that the commissioners will be reviewing, and I think, um, Sun Energy is looking to see if they'll even be in the county maybe in that capacity. So they wanna support counties that, I guess, are supporting their business. Um, we've talked to Senator Cook's office and Representative Steinberg's office, and they both would like to help as well, but they like for local to have some meat in the game. So, um, I think it's kinda time for us to do something. You asked for more than one estimate. I think that was you, Mr. Krotik, that asked for that. So we have two proposals. One, the educational greenhouse, I believe, was seventy-six thousand. Then they got another estimate from another one that was like a hundred and twenty-five. That was not the teaching educational greenhouse. I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty-three thousand. That was just a regular greenhouse. But the one that our teachers, Mr. Mr. Meads and Ms. Swain would prefer, is the educational teaching greenhouse. It just goes better with, uh, teaching the curriculum. They asked for a third estimate, however, that person was not able to get it together soon enough for us, so. That's the greenhouse presentation as I have it. Uh, Mr. Monroe is here. Maybe he'd like to add something.
I'll see that.
I know there's been a lot of, um, energy put into this greenhouse projects. It's a student level, a teacher level, and it is a very good, uh, project. It would, uh, it suits greatly. This area is mainly agricultural. We love to train students to stay here, work here, and raise awareness of it. So.
And even from a business perspective, you know, when they can grow their mums and their poinsettias and look at the expense and the time and then sell them to the community and look at the profit, I mean, it's, it's really more than just the ag factor, you know? It's, it's a really broader, uh, sense of education opportunity.
Did the peep, oh, go ahead, Will.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I was just wondering, did the people that did these bids, are they aware of the local building codes?
They are. In fact, the one with the educational greenhouse had to go back and revise it to meet our wind standards.
Hundred twenty miles an hour?
Mm-hmm. Because that one was shared with the County Manager's office, and they contacted Ms. Swain, I believe, and said, "This doesn't meet our wind code." And so she in turn contacted the manufacturer who did up it.
Mr. Monroe, uh, have, uh, have you had an opportunity to look at this, uh, proposed greenhouse?
I have.
Okay.
We reviewed it today one more time. Uh, when we looked at those greenhouses that had, kind of, we had a little bit, a lot of the estimates are given for a standard, um, greenhouse, like, used in industry. The educational greenhouse is set up by a company, maybe there's twenty-five or thirty students to be working in there. A standard greenhouse, the layout wouldn't really be the best or something like that. That's why we really are focusing on that, on that educational greenhouse. Those classes are well-attended, uh, and the campus, thirty students, twenty-five, thirty students, and both messy and annual re, that's probably the best, the best one to look at for what we want to do.
And the cheapest.
Actually, they come in the cheapest.
Yeah.
Uh, right, so it's only got, I mean, maybe this is fine, but it's only got four, uh, hundred and fifteen outlets in it, and it's, uh, thirty by ninety-six. Just point it out, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I don't know, and, and, and I'm not saying this isn't what they need, but, so this company out of Georgia will sell it and crate it, and I don't see anything in here about shipping, but I'm assuming that's calculated in here, for fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. But then, if we want them to install it, it's twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look this over further. I, I, I'm not quite sure what makes it, not that it isn't cheaper, but I'm trying to figure out what makes it much different than the educational, because if it is, I'm not seeing it. And I'm not saying it isn't, but just trying to figure it out, 'cause it just looks like a, somebody's got an engineer on staff, and I'm not saying they might not have put additional braces and what have you, 'cause when I've dealt with other things, that's generally what happened, like garage doors. They put a, another support on each door, and that increases the wind load, uh, and so they got it up to a hundred and twenty-seven, uh, miles per hour, and, uh, but, uh, I'm trying to figure out what, 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 outside of that, and it's, and it's ninety-six, thirty by ninety-six, which is, you know, a nice size, but...
In one case, it was impacted the outside wall. The one standard greenhouse, we have five-foot outside wall, which will limit the amount of students you could put in that greenhouse. The other was kind of the layout inside, so you know, it'll be more room in there to have those students in there.
Okay.
Probably some kind of table in the center where you could actually do a teaching.
Right. And in many cases, in the educational greenhouse, things are hard-wired in. You mentioned the outfits, those, uh, everything, the pans, everything were hard-wired in, where you wouldn't really need the receptacle.
Oh, and, and there's one other thing I just noticed on this. This, if we did go with this, not saying this would be a deal-breaker, but this does not include site prep, permits, or slab. So I would just ask that we start with the fifty-two thousand, seven... So I would just ask that we start with the $52,780 if we were to do it. And we look into the $24,000 and see if we couldn't bid that out, the installation, and if we were to do this. And we might find that we could maybe get it with the slab for the same price or maybe not much more. I don't know that we can. I know, but the little bit of electrical work, they're only going to put 100 amp panel in there and four outlets. And not a lot of plumbing. It's going to be seven spigots. And I don't know. It's $24,000. It's a third of the cost. I would encourage us to consider using some local people to install it. Find out what the cost of the slab is so we know what the site is going to cost to have it prepped and totally ready if we did pull the trigger on the $76,000. But I also think we should be getting, we should be qualifying or applying and hopefully qualify for other grants I know are available.
Well, the Carolina Ag, Ag Carolina, that grant, they looked at that as well. And they are going to apply for that. But now that is a $5,000 standalone grant. Meaning, we couldn't put that $5,000 on this.
Why couldn't we?
Because that's part of the criteria of the grant. They want it to fund a project. It's up to $5,000. They want it to fund a project from start to finish. Ms. Swain did look at that one. And she is going to-
I looked at it too. I didn't see that part. And that could be.
Where would it go, Janet?
Well, they'd like it in the existing area.
But do you have 3,000 square feet right there?
I believe they have figured that they do.
Really?
Yeah.
You do? What's the current size of the greenhouse?
That's written on that sheet.
Of the existing, the one we have already?
That's on top there.
Uh.
Originally the existing size, but the head house.
Well, my question too was, you said that the county was willing to assist with some of this, but they wanted, you know, us involved too.
Well, the county, that's right.
They've given you a number.
They have not. No one wants to take the bull by the horns.
Okay.
Well, I think they would need some assurance from us that we're going to fund it.
Yeah.
And the obvious time to do it would be the next budget cycle.
Yeah.
Because then they'll see that we do have it in the budget. Also, if we did this during the school year, it would concern me about student safety.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have demolition of the present greenhouse and then the construction of a new greenhouse. And I don't know how many of you have ever been back there to see the, you know, where the students go. They're going to have to walk right by that in order to get to the building, the present building.
I like Will's idea about getting some bids for the contracting work. I mean, you can get a lot of your site work locally. They may be able to donate their time, you know?
I was just getting ready to say, concrete.
Concrete, you could get your concrete at cost. You know, they'll charge you a little bit, but you could probably get it at cost at least, if not, some of it donated. I think we need to really investigate that a little bit more because that's quite a savings of $25,000. I am in agreement with the greenhouse. I'd love to have it at our school. So whatever it takes to make it happen, I'm in full agreement. But I do think we need to sub out the cost of building it.
Mr. Monroe, what rate was it we applied for that they turned down? Do you know?
The mobile grant?
The, whatever one. You don't know which one it was? The one you put in the file, you didn't follow up on, sorry.
And there's a little bit of a misconception about that, too. We had looked at some grants, the original ones, we were looking at CTE ones, federal ones.
Okay.
And when we looked further into that, and I talked to folks at the FBI, they said anything that was on mobile structure permits, structure could not be funded.
Could not be funded.
So things that were inside that, two conventions, those type of things, violations, those could be, anything non-mobile could not be funded through federal funds.
I think, you know, with the concern for demolition and I think Matt would be a good person to talk with, Matt Mullins. And I don't think it's going to take that long. And I know it's not going to be, the noise is not going to be a factor because I hear noise when I'm out there all the time in the automotive department, so.
I'm pretty sure you might be able to blow that down.
A strong wind may take the existing greenhouse down.
We were hoping with Florence coming this way. But it didn't happen, which I'm thankful that Florence did not come this way. My goodness.
In all the discussion we've had, just preliminary looking, there are some grants out there that could support. And in fact, neighboring districts said, look at Farm Bureau because they sponsor a lot of these types of initiatives. Golden Leaf Grants will fund agricultural-based projects. And they offer $200,000 grants.
Wow. Well, this is great.
Farmers for Rural Education, a local farmer can nominate a district and then they qualify for a $25,000 grant. The grant specifically says to renovate or start new existing greenhouses.
Okay. So I know you've been in on all these discussions since May. So have you checked into any of these for them?
Well, I ran up all of them today. I mean, just in a 30-minute Google search, literally.
Okay.
Those are things that popped up as opportunities for us to apply for. Like the farmers' one has a January open date for the grant period. And again, it takes a local farmer to nominate your district. You get a PIN number.
I'm pretty sure that James Farby would do that.
And then you go through and apply for that process. The Golden Leaf has a long process that you also have to go through. It's a competitive process, but most of our neighboring districts have Golden Leaf Grants. Sometimes it depends on your socioeconomic status, but when we talked to somebody today, they said you should definitely try that route.
And I think that's great. I really do. But we've got commissioners and a county manager that is willing to support us on this at this time. And I don't want us to miss that opportunity of that money either. So I don't want us to drag our feet, so to speak. I mean, May, June, July, August, September, this has been going on five months.
I think we should try your grants. I think we should share that initial information that you have with the county manager and hopefully he'll share it with the commissioners. And I think at the end of the day, if we can't get a grant, they're supposed to be in charge of capital and paying for it. So we should tell them we need a capital improvement. You know? They're in charge of paying for buildings and it's not about a building or not.
And I'm all for that as well. It's just, you know, I do want us to keep in mind that our high school students are there for a short time to use this greenhouse. And Sydney can certainly tell us a little bit about it. Have you taken horticulture, Sydney?
I was planning to take horticulture this year, but since we're not providing horticulture one this year because of the condition that it's in, it made that impossible for me this year. And if conditions aren't able to improve, then they may just continue the students that have already taken horticulture one and let them finish their journey in that class and wait until the greenhouse has been fixed, until they let a new generation get into it. And I know personally, my sister's been in ag since I was in sixth grade, I believe. And I've been in that greenhouse since then, watering those plants for them and helping out with that because of the conditions. It's really, you can't grow things in there. Like, it's really bad.
So we should meet with the commissioners over at the greenhouse? And we should research the grants? We should share that information preliminary with them? We should reach out to the people of the North Carolina Extension Agency, see if they've got any extra ideas? And we should see if they'll build a greenhouse with the capital.
And I think that's good. But, you know, hearing the suggestion that the perfect time to look at it is the budget time, I mean, that's not until May.
I don't suggest that we do all that work before the budget. I suggest we do all that work. And then I think if we can get some commitment from any of the other people of any size, then we could consider doing something further. But right now, I don't think we have enough.
The commissioners have not committed to an amount, but I'm inclined to think they would match us.
But when you share that proposal with them, they might.
Okay.
I think they need to see it.
That's what I'm saying. So we share that with them, we take them over there.
They have actually, well, Dan Scanlon saw it.
That's what I said, we should meet them over there.
Yeah, they need to see it because it's easy to sit here and describe it, but until you're inside of it, looking at the plants that are for sale and thinking the place is going to blow down.
Look at the greenhouse. I see what you're saying, Karen. I thought you were saying, yes.
And that's what I was talking about. No, 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 no. I was saying, share that information with them. Look at the grants.
A joint meeting, the perfect location. The greenhouse.
Sure. That'd be great.
We've got one coming up in November.
November and a greenhouse with holes in it. Let's do it.
There you go.
We could just go by there first and visit.
What do you think, Sydney? Point us in our world.
Well, as far as student safety goes, we might be able to get it done if everything comes together over Christmas vacation.
Yeah, that would be great. Because, you know, I've even, I mean, I've heard the M word, you know, that's there. And, you know, that's just not a good word.
In what word?
The mold word.
Mice?
The M word. You made me say it.
I can't even imagine that there's not mold in there. I'm thinking mice.
I think.
That too.
As long as a rooster's not in there, I don't care.
You know, I just, I think this is, you know, and we talked earlier about teachers having instructional supplies and materials that they needed to teach their children. And I know that this is a lot more than copy paper. I do know that. But it is needed to teach that horticulture curriculum.
Especially if the students can't take the course.
Right.
There you go. They can't take the course.
Could you call the company and see how long it would take to construct that?
Okay. I could do it. Yep. All right, I'll have Abby and Missy do it.
All right, so at this point, what do you want to do?
Well, what do you think, Mark?
What do I think?
Yeah. Well, no, let me take that back.
What do I think? No, I mean, I think it's up to the board on what type of timeline you want to put this on.
As quickly as possible.
Okay. Look, I think we ought to have a greenhouse. I think we ought to have a lot of things. Okay?
I don't think it was against the greenhouse.
We're getting ready to talk about a budget again. And I kept hearing that we didn't have any money and we were going to be in the red very shortly. And I'm not saying that that greenhouse shouldn't be fixed better than it ever was. That's not what I'm saying. But.
We can't grow money. I understand what you're saying.
And we need to get them over there on the commissioner's side. And we need to meet with the commissioners at some reasonable time, even if it's a group of three at a time or two or whatever, and get them over there and let them see what's going on. And then have a short timeline of discussion on it. And I think that's reasonable. I would encourage trying to get the grants, but if that's not.
Well, we can do both.
And we can start working on the grants. And Renee has come up with some more, so.
Right. And if any of the grants are on a quick timeline, if we do the work and we get the grants, that's still our money that could be, we're saying, we're putting this and we put our man hours or people hours towards getting this money. That's our way of doing it without going into our own budget.
Is, now, tell me about the capital outlay improvement. I know we have a budget. We had that marked for certain things. Is it possible to look at some of those things and see if they could wait a little bit longer? I mean, is that allowed?
Well, that's, yeah, well, we have to act on it here.
Uh huh.
And then we have to notify the county commissioners that there's been a revision in priorities because they were given the preliminary listing that we approved. And I would say that, you know, definitely Matt would have to be here to talk about, you know, what improvements are already in capital outlay and what might be postponed.
How about the lottery funds? Have they all already been committed to capital outlay projects?
They're part of that same report. Yes.
I did send Missy a message and ask about the specifics for students, why it was, she said spacing, and I'm sorry, spacing and the space between aisles for students to work was the biggie. Most greenhouses have five to six people working and not 25, like she would have in the class. So it was the spacing. And it also allows them to grow more of a variety with different temperature zones. So it's not just that the whole greenhouse is one temp. She has also sent this to the consultant to give him the educational specs that will, all of the educational specs, that will set it apart, not just those things. She does know that this greenhouse has the higher side walls, as Mr. Monroe mentioned, so that students will not hit their heads from the hanging pots.
Do you want to put this on the agenda for the November 1st meeting?
I do think so. I would. And I would, you know, could we possibly get a committee working with Renee and Mr. Monroe and Ms. Swain and Mr. Meads and maybe the FFA officers?
The more people, the better.
So we're putting it on the agenda to do what?
Well, we'll get more information.
Thinking of having all these answers, these questions answered and knowing.
Get more information and maybe make a decision of some sort if we have the information.
Should the commissioners prior to that?
Yeah, I was going to say, do you want me to contact Dan Scanlon and set up a tour?
Ask him, well, ask him if they'll go at their leisure between now and our November 1st meeting. So that we don't have to go as a group if that's more easier for them.
Or we could go as a group.
It's hard, well, it is hard, but it's hard to schedule 12.
But we could just all go over there prior to the meeting. It's right around the corner. If we wanted to.
Okay.
You mean the meeting with them or our board meeting?
The meeting with them.
Well, we're not going to meet with them until after our board meeting.
Okay, yes, ma'am. All right. However, I just feel like at some point, they need to be in there and see that space and they need to see that number. And then we need to have a number for the site prep and we need to have a number for the concrete and we need to paint that whole picture.
And, you know, actually, I know a concrete person who would probably donate his labor. So, you know, I'll certainly do what I can to maybe get some local grants.
So we're going to put it on the November 1st agenda?
But we definitely need to get them to go at their leisure.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it would be easier to get them to go at their leisure than.
Because when they're going by, they can just drop by the greenhouse and look at it. I think that would be beneficial.
I think that's good.
Anything else?
So I just got, Mark, were you aware before all this? I mean, that they weren't offering the ag courses as a result of the condition of the greenhouse?
No.
Okay.
Next item. Second reading for revision to policy 3410, testing and assessment program. Ms. Rose?
What?
Didn't miss Rose.
I'm just reading what it has here.
I don't know what I'm supposed to talk about here.
This is the one with the A, the A, the students to be exempt from their final exam. It's second reading, so if that's the proposal, we'll have to decide if that's a proposal or whether we go with NAP's proposal that says all classes are important and so all people should take final exams.
I did check into that a little bit further. You know, when I got home that evening, I know it was said at the last board meeting, you know, that it was, they may be exempt. But when I looked at the Currituck County High School handbook online, it does not say that. It says they will be exempt. So I know it is, you know, it's like, you know, it doesn't matter how old the children are, high school or whatever, they like to be rewarded for good grades. And that is, and I know that most of the classes, they have to take end-of-course exams. And so it's, I think it makes kids come to school when they have the option. But I think it makes them work hard. You know, I'm not saying to do away with exempting students who have a B and two or fewer absences. But I do think an A is an A. And if you've mastered the material, you should be exempt, whether you have two absences or three. Because an A is what we're shooting for. So shall I make a motion?
Well, wait a minute. Hold on.
Okay, May is still in the policy. So that gives a teacher the option to either give the final exam or not.
And that's a problem, see? And there's a lot of these problems with the Currituck County Schools Handbook and the individual schools' handbooks because they're not the same.
So, but to your point about they would be rewarded, they like to be rewarded, part of the reward in the current policy, as I see it, is they're being rewarded.
For being there.
Well, it's a twofer. You got to get an A and you got to be there to be rewarded. So.
No, you can have a B, you can have an 80 and one or two absences and you have no exam. Or you can.
They need to get rid of that part.
Or you can have a 97 and three or four absences, and you have to take the exam.
Well, I think you should have to be there.
But it, but it kind of conflicts our new policy that took away 10 days and you don't pass, or you may be in jeopardy of passing. We took that away.
I didn't vote for that either.
But, but we did take it away. So even though you didn't vote for it, it's our policy.
I believe that you gotta be where you're supposed to be, and that's how you get rewarded. And that's how it trains you to be successful in later life, is showing up and doing what you're supposed to do.
I understand what you think about that, but that is our policy. But, you know, I, can I make a motion?
Well, can I just say one thing? First of all, if it's in the handbook for this year, I don't think we can change it mid-year.
Look, your handbook can't file a policy.
Well. So we can change the policy, and then the handbook's going to be wrong, and then we're going to be dealing with that all year from anybody. Go ahead.
We can, we can revise the handbook online. We can revise the handbook online.
Yeah.
I just know that people will be.
I, I, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know that any, I mean, what would you students think if we revised the policy to say students will be exempt from an exam? That does not have an end of course for the state if they have an A? End, end of sentence.
If you have an excessive amount of unexcused absences, I do think that there's no excuse, even if you have an A, like, there is no excuse for having an excessive amount.
That's, that's, that's in there. After the discussion last time, unexcused absences takes you out of the exemption.
Right.
Yeah.
I was just wondering about that because.
Yeah, that's in there now.
But honestly, Sidney, do you think if you have an excessive amount of absences that you would have an A?
No.
Okay. Because you need to be there to get the instruction.
I think one of the counterpoints was that teachers who teach those classes where it says they will be exempt, it makes it so that their classes are essentially deemed less valuable. So if it does say they are, like, absolutely are exempt, I think it would be beneficial to give the teachers the choice in that matter, like, whether or not their, their exam is optional in those ways.
Um, I agree with what you said about the fact that if there is the possibility of an exemption from an exam, that students will strive harder to get the A and make sure that they're there, and make sure that they're getting an A so that they don't have to take the exam. Because people do have test anxiety and things like that. And I know that I'm the type of person to try to get an A regardless of exam or not. But I know that especially in my COA classes, my biology class right now, if you get an A in it, you don't have to take the final exam. And I know that there's a lot of people in my biology class right now that are studying harder than they've ever studied, just to make sure that they don't have to take that exam.
Because the exam is typically harder and could pull your grade down.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Comprehensive.
Definitely going to have to agree with Kealan as well. Uh, if the teachers are thinking that their tests or their class aren't as important because of that rule, give them the choice. Because if they do feel like it's important for everyone to take that exam, then by all means, have them make it required for that class. Um, another thing with it too is that the exam tests the knowledge throughout the whole class. It's not just a test on one section. So it's also a good way for teachers, especially to, um, see their progress and see how kids retained all the information, rather than just learning a couple vocabulary words. Knowing them, testing on them, and then forgetting them afterwards. So I think it really has to be up to the teacher whether or not, um, they're going to require it. Uh, personally, I like the way NAP does it with having everyone take the exam, because that's just how I've always had it. But if you had the choice, I would say give the teachers an option, whether or not to require it.
And I think that's always great to let teachers have input.
So we just want to leave the May be tested?
And possibly take out the number of days absent?
I thought you, I thought you did for the As. I thought you said if you, they had the A. I didn't, I didn't think the days were still there, just the Bs.
I'm sorry. I don't have it in front of me.
The Bs had up to, up to two. Yeah. And then the last, uh, at the last one, there was concern about unexcused absences. So if the A student has any unexcused, then that policy, uh, provision falls away.
Can you read the new one?
Can I read the new one? No, I didn't pick my laptop.
I have the one that doesn't have the unexcused in there.
As recognition for good attendance and academic performance, a student with an A average may be exempt from final exams in courses which do not require state exams. A student with a B average and not missing more than two days during the semester will be eligible for an exemption. Students will not be exempted from EOC tests, NC fin, or for NC final exams, and students will not be, um, um, eligible for this waiver if they have unexcused absences.
I, I kind of think that covers it. It, it still says May. We need to put something in there they suggested about teacher discretion?
Well, if it says a A.
That's May. That's the May.
Okay. May would take care of that?
Yeah.
It's already done, right?
Well, no, we haven't approved the wording.
Well, we haven't approved it, but it's been written. Yes.
That's, okay.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval? That was read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item. Second reading of revisions to policy 6420, contracts with the board. Ms. Crussell?
Good evening. Um, this policy, we're proposing that the, the cap of contracts that have to be reported to the board would be 90,000 instead of 50,000. And a few exemptions, such as itemized items in the annual capital outlay budget. And also utility purchases, property insurance from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and the purchase of diesel fuel.
Basically, all things that we don't have any control over anyway.
True, and we do, we do a blanket purchase order every year at the beginning of the year to cover the utilities, so that's why they're listed. And, um, the other exceptions were recommended by the lawyer. Um, and then we would be reporting to you contracts ranging 50 and above at the next meeting.
Okay. I'll go with that.
Questions?
So we're not going to be, um, known about until after it's done, contracts up to $90,000?
That would be true. They're, they're generally the, the same contracts happen every year.
So we're going to be placing the contracts over a certain amount out for bids still? Is that what we're doing too?
Um, over 90, when it comes before you.
So we're not gonna, we're not, but if you had a contract, for example, for $60,000, would it be out for bid?
Yes.
Informally. Right. Informally. Yeah.
What is it, what is it now? How, how do we?
Right now, it's 50,000.
I know you're the cap, but when do you put things out for bid? Was there, is there a limit on that, a number?
The, our board policy says two or more quotes when feasible. So 90 and above, we put it out for bid, and we hope to get two or more quotes, or two, two or more bids.
Okay.
Um, some things are bid out. Some things, it's not possible to bid it out, like utilities.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I totally understand that, but.
Under 90, what happens typically is, uh, the maintenance department or the finance department is out there checking quotes. It's not a formal bid process, but they'll call people and they'll say, you know, what can you do this service for? And, and you get numbers from different companies.
I think it's a lot of money. I think that we ought to be getting bids for services under $90,000 personally. I mean, but, you know.
I think they do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they get bids. I don't think that's what we're addressing. Aren't we addressing that we don't need to, um.
That y'all are getting the bids and we don't have to prove it.
Unless it's 90,000 or more. Is that correct?
That's true. We don't have to wait for board approval. We can, we can approve the contract. Mr. Stefanic can sign off on it. And then we bring it to you the next board meeting if it's over 50,000.
But, but even still, we don't put contracts out for a real bid unless they're over $90,000 currently.
That's true.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I, 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 I wasn't saying that's what you were talking about, but in my understanding of what we're talking about, that part makes me uncomfortable.
I think we get bids. I know we get bids.
I mean.
I'm sorry?
I think we get bids for under 90. I know, but I know Matt, I know that they do on some, in some cases.
We do get quotes.
Yeah, you get, yeah, you get quotes. Yeah, you get quotes.
That's, that's the same thing as a bid to me.
It was, well, and it was the same thing. Lori, was it just last year that you talked about the 30,000, $40,000 savings in one of our plans, one of our insurance plans? Yeah. She, she called around and was finding out, you shop around and find the best prices, and then you can change companies if you find a better price.
And I, and I applaud her for doing that. And I spoke about it then, and I'll tell her once again, that was great. The problem, though, is that, do we have a process that says, X amount, we're going to do this? And that's just my question, and I'm sorry to take up so much time, but I just feel like, okay, Matt might do it different than she does it, if there's not a process that we all adhere to. And I'm just looking for, or some new hire comes in, or whatever. I don't know.
Yeah.
And I just don't want somebody spending 50 grand, and then later, or 60, or whatever, and buying a greenhouse and finding out that, that they only got two quotes from some company that's on the internet that flies under the radar with the same company under two different identifiers. I, I, you know, I just.
Well, perhaps we should say must get three quotes.
Well, we have another policy that covers all that, so you have to amend it. And I didn't, I didn't bring it with me.
Yeah.
So, but it's a, the standard state policy.
I, I know that the people that do the most contracts, it's maintenance, and it's Matt Mullins, and it's Lori. And they don't do anything just over the internet. They're, they're on the phone with people. They're talking through, um, you know, the contracts. For example, the, the lease busing process, we've had two, I think, two different representatives from the company. We've had their lawyers, our lawyers, Matt, me. Uh, you know, all on to make sure that we're getting the best, uh, process, and we're going through the whole, uh, you know, process the right way. We didn't have to go through the bid process on that because the company we're working with is on state contract. And so the state went through the, um, the bidding process, and so we can get the group purchase rate, which is the lowest rate, and so we got away from the bidding process on that, but.
That whenever that.
Right. That's, that's a legal, that's a legal exception. Yes.
And we do always try to include local bids, I'm sure. We support local, right?
We don't have a bus company in Currytuck.
I know, I know. But we did in North Carolina. Did we use that one?
This is the person that has the North Carolina contract for buses, yes.
Must not be Thomas.
I, I don't know exactly, I don't know exactly where they're housed, but they have the contract.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion for approval for policy 6420?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, second reading of revisions to policy 9120, bidding for construction work. Lori?
Uh, yes, and this follows suit with the, the last policy. We would be changing, um, any construction or repair contract involving expenditures in excess. We would be changing from 50,000 to 90,000.
The same situation that we just did.
And these are the things that I know Matt is on the phone, uh, trying to get the best deals. For example, the Shawboro wastewater.
The Shawboro, yeah.
He's been calling all over trying to see if anybody else will service so that we have a competitive bid for this gentleman, and they're all saying, he trained us, he's the best one, and so you probably should stick with him. Um, so he does call for contractor work on, on those repairs.
So what did he get? It was a bid on a renovation on the greenhouse? No, I'm saying.
We got to get him on this team, Renee.
What I'm saying, we do this, and then Janet, you don't even have to worry about it because he gets a contract.
We're talking, we're talking nice. I don't think you checked on renovation costs, because Janet's been talking new.
This project of this greenhouse has been talked more about by this board than anything I can remember.
Do I have a, do I have a motion that we approve the revisions to policy 9120, bidding for construction work?
I'm sorry.
Do I have a motion that we approve the revisions to policy 9120, bidding for construction work?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Are you awake? Because you're, you're on the next one, that's why I asked. Second reading of revisions to policy 5010, parent organization.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure with this, and I know it says parent organizations, and I, of course, think Booster Club or Band Club. And, you know, I'm sure that we're already following these rules, but I know that sometimes, my concern is really for the donations to the school system. And actually, these are not donations to the school system I'm worried about. It's donations made for our students. Like, us changing this is not going to prevent parents from donating money for football meals, correct?
No, no.
Okay. Our parents donating money to the volleyball team for their pink jerseys or, uh, tournament. We can still do all that without going through red tape.
Yeah, all, all it says on here is that, um, that parent groups can't operate independent of the school. That's what these new pieces are. And it says on here, they put clarification languages to make sure that they're touching base with the principal before they move forward. And I used to say that when I was a principal to our PTAs. They're always trying to do what's best, but sometimes when they just, they get a donation, it may not have anything to do with the school program. And so then when they come forward, they said, we'll, we'll have to turn that donation down because we really can't use it.
I see.
Uh, and so you just have to double check with the principal, making sure that it's in the best interest of the activity or the overall school program.
I, I just know we have a lot of donations that come through for our students.
Sure.
And, uh, you know, there are parents that like doing that, whether it be the football meals or whatever, and I don't want to put anything in place that will hamper that.
No, it's just making sure that the, the administration knows what the parent group is doing. That's all that provision means.
Well, isn't there also a change that two people had to sign off on deposits?
Yes. That one, I think we got cleared up at the last meeting, but then there were some concerns about some of this new language, and that's why we put it on hold.
So if we have a group of parents that want to do the football meals, they just need to run it through Dr. Matney? Is that what you're saying?
Or, or if they typically go through, um, Todd Parker, and Todd Parker and Dr. Matney are on the same page, then, then that.
And, and by the same token, you've got a parent that wants to buy the pink-out jerseys. It's okay, correct? They just have to run it by Dr. Matney?
Just have to notify folks on what's going on.
Okay.
Um, and what I'll say on that.
I don't want to deter that.
No, I understand, but if it's, uh, uh, if you said jerseys, or if you're talking about shirts, and, and that's a perfect example. You just have to make sure that by putting those special jerseys on, you're not violating some high school athletic association policy.
Right.
And that's why the parent, yeah, yeah. The coach and the athletic director and the, and the principal, right. You go through all those things. We're not saying that we don't appreciate the donation. You just have to make sure that the team doesn't suffer because they weren't in an official uniform or something like that. Um, and just get all those exceptions to the rules, and then they want to donate it, then they're clear to go.
Because I can see this being a problem if we stop parents from being involved.
Oh, no, that's not the intent at all. That's not the intent at all.
With donations.
Yeah, that is not the intent at all. I know. It's just, it, it says in here, in, in the, in the recommendation pieces, um, from, uh, school boards associations, it just says, you just have to make sure that they communicate with the school. So that parent organizations aren't operating independent of the school or the school district.
Oh, well, honestly, these donations are not coming through a parent organization. It's just a few parents getting together and doing the football meals or.
Even, even more important, that, that they just check. They just check with people. That's all. Instead of just showing up with whatever. Yeah, they just have to make sure they tell people what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the second reading of revisions to policy 5010, parent organization?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Ms. Rose with that. If, if anybody feels that way, have them contact me, and, and I'll explain why it's there.
Well, I know we've had, like, restaurants donate even, you know, the meals, so we want to encourage that community support.
Yes, as a lifetime schoolperson, we don't turn down donations very often. We, we're very open to that.
Okay, next item, second reading of revisions to policy 1710, 4021, 7230, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying. Superintendent Stefanic?
We had some requests for some additional information, uh, on this, and then because of.
We had some requests for some additional information on this, and then because of some wording changes, it was just asked to put this off to the second reading until this month, so people had a month to review any of the changes. The one question that was asked that we check on was that when they added board members to the policy, if that, if there was any recommendations for consequences, should a board member be alleged to have harassed or bullied somebody? And the recommendation was that after investigation, unless it reaches the, the legal level where you have to involve the, the law enforcement agencies, that they didn't have any recommendations to put with the policy.
Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion that we approve the second reading of revisions to policy 1710, 4021, 7230, prohibition against discrimination, harassment and bullying?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next item, 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget review and adoption. Ms. Trussell?
Hello again. We discussed in the work session, the budget resolution and the budget for this current year. The state public school fund will have a little over $27 million to be approved tonight. Local current expense, almost 11.5 million. Federal grants, a little over 1 million. Capital outlay fund, 2.2 million. Child nutrition fund, a little over 1.7 million. Other local fund, 1.1 million, for grand total of 44.6 million dollars. And I always want to add, this is a moving target. We've already received two more allocations from the state since this budget was prepared, so they'll come to you as budget amendments.
Also, with that being said, just, we did this last year, and we were informing the commissioners of how our budget works. We're just now starting October. We've had 12 revisions from the state already. I think the 12th allotment email revision came today, so they're averaging about two a week, you know, since we started the school year.
They're not taking money back, are they?
Not yet.
Not yet, no, they're just been, they're trying to catch up on allocations that haven't been passed out yet.
And we're still waiting for some federal funds, so that total I hope will go up by the next time I bring budget amendments.
Do you want to mention your projection for a fund balance at the end of this fiscal year?
Yes sir. I think by the end of this year, we'll have approximately $424,000 remaining in our fund balance. That's the local current expense fund balance.
What is our monthly operating expense?
For local funds?
No, just to operate our school system. Any idea?
Divide that 44 by 12.
Yeah, 44 divided by 12, so between 3.5 and 4 million dollars a month.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Trussell?
No, I don't have any questions for Ms. Trussell.
Okay.
I have a comment that I think we should do a better job meeting and discussing this information in the future, so for future budgets. I would like to see that happen, it's got nothing to do with Ms. Trussell. She's doing a great job, I know she thinks I pick on her, but I don't mean to, and I'm just trying to get the information so I have a clear understanding, so that when I communicate with the commissioners, and we can all speak the same language, and I can paint a picture in hopes that they can see it a little clearer, and that's all I'm trying to do.
Perhaps we should have a budget retreat instead of just an hour or two one evening, you know, maybe a daytime thing.
Well, I was just getting ready to say, we did make plans at the work session that we would do that, but I'm in agreement with you that if we're going to do it, it needs to be done before now, not after.
Right, I mean, at this point, to try to have this out, we're late in the game. Not that there's anything that is, we can change at this point.
And the year is very hectic, I know it is, but.
I think though, that we could get a lot of information, even if we didn't change anything, and understand it better, would help our lines of communication when we're trying to.
Sell the schools.
Get more resources. That's all. It's not, it's not that you're doing anything bad, it's just that you didn't, it's not your job to come with us and set it up and have the conversation started. I just think we should do a better job collectively in doing that.
Okay, this budget's been developed how long?
Finished it last Thursday.
Okay.
Well, then, maybe next time, if that's the case, and we're this short, then we got to figure out another way to put it off and discuss it.
Well, it's like, you know, it's like I mentioned at the work session, we all need to get together, go through the local budget, and, you know, find out where we think we can cut some items since.
Correct.
Year after next, we're going to be running out of money.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't, I don't have any answers to that, just like no one else that I hear does, because I agree with you, we need to look at not only the local budget, but the whole budget, and we need to do a better job of communicating.
Right.
Well, the sad part about that, looking at where we can cut with the local budget, is the majority of the local funds are positions. Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion that we approve the 2018-19 fiscal year budget?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Do you have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, field trips requested, if Mr. Stefanik has approved, do you want to go over those fairly quickly?
Very quickly. So, have some of our student groups having their conventions or annual conferences. FFA is going to their national convention in Indianapolis, here in a couple of weeks, the end of October. FBLA, National Fall Leadership Conference is in Charlotte, and that's happening November 13th, 15th to the 18th. And JPK, SAD State Conference in Raleigh, November 16th through the 18th.
Thank you. Okay, next consent agenda, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next information items, next work session will be November 1st, 2018, at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4 o'clock, and next Board of Education meeting will be here, November 1st, at Courthouse at 6:30. Okay, board member and superintendent comments, Mr. Stefanik?
For the first time ever, nothing to report, Dr. Dobny.
Must be Florence.
Okay, next, Mr. Kradak?
Well, I had the, well, the pleasure of working with Dr. Dobny and Mark and Matt and Ms. Melissa.
Futral.
Futral, yep. Putting a presentation with the tourism advisory board to try to see if we couldn't get them to buy into some bus wraps on our activity buses. We were trying to see if we could get them to collectively pay for our seven activity buses that go to many different locations across several states, and see if they'd buy into the concept of marketing on the sides of them. And so, we all went over there, and I think we did a pretty good job, and hopefully they'll not only get the benefit of some good advertising, but they'll get the benefit of a good school system, or better school system, if we get the money and utilize it properly, and I'm sure we will. And basically, they will be able to help the citizens without getting it out of the general fund. And I think that's something that could legally be done, and I would encourage them to do so, and I look forward to it. Also, I'd like to congratulate the coach at, the baseball coach, Justin Hill, for the field recognition, the best field, and the person that does a lot, that pitches in and basically heads up that field maintenance treatment operation is Christian Richardson. And I'd really like to thank them for what they have, well, him particularly, for what he's accomplished on all the different fields, but that baseball field was recognized, and he's done so many other fields that really are, are really done nice. And with that, I hope everybody's looking forward to a fall season. Looks like it was upon us until today, and anyhow, with that, I'd say have a happy Halloween, and God bless Currituck County.
Okay, Ms. Rose?
I'd like to thank Dr. Dobny and Mr. Kradak and staff for going before the tourism board and asking for the money for our buses to serve as advertisement. I can't think of a better way to spend the tourism dollars. Hats off to the Moyack Elementary Panthers and their penny war, that they raised $5,109 for a student, her name is Savannah, she's at the school, and I think we heard this mentioned earlier. She's undergoing some treatments for a mass in her brain, and I just think that's awesome, that they all came together and brought their pennies in to raise $5,000 to help with medical cost. Also, a shout out to our JP NAP SAD members who held a yard sale this past weekend to help defer cost for their big field trip coming up. And our FFA group from the high school who did a lot of fundraisers as well, to help defer their costs to the national convention. I'm real proud of our FFA chapter, our local chapter, for holding the regional rally yesterday. I think there were about 288 students here from all over northeast North Carolina, and I popped in out there and saw lots of good leadership going on from our students. And that's it.
Didn't you say that Mary Kate Morgan was one of the presenters?
Mary Kate was, and we actually have two regional officers from Currituck. Claudia Morgan serves as the Northeast Region President, and Abby Rose serves as Secretary for the Northeast Region, and they were, Sydney was there, all the, lots of FFA students were there helping. It was a collaborative effort from our local chapter.
We also have state officers come in to our regional leadership conference and visit with us and get to know us better.
And it was just so many different stations, and the students traveled to these presentations led by our leaders of tomorrow.
And I don't know if the four of you know Mary Kate, but she was a student board member when she was in school, so. Okay, Ms. Etheridge?
Yes. Well, here it is, October, fall sports are in full swing, come out and support our nights. I was able to attend Central Elementary's Grandparents' Day Luncheon, and I want to commend Ms. Chapel for always having the enthusiasm in that school. You can just tell that everybody works really well together. I had a great time with my granddaughter Alyssa eating lunch that day. I'd like to ask the public to really research the candidates that are on the ballot this fall in our November election, here locally and our state, state candidates. Please do your research and really find out what they stand for. Take the time, don't just go to the polls just to vote. I know everybody's pushing voting, 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 but really find out what it's all about and who you want to support, and do your research, and thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Kraft?
Yes, I visited all the schools this month. My thoughts and prayers tonight are with Deidra Simmons and her husband as they undergo this next medical challenge that they have. I spent a good portion of the September 19th workday sitting in on some of the professional development sessions. I was very impressed. Curriculum team leaders did a wonderful job, and people are working together to coordinate and make sure that we're all on the same page with, with our standards. I attended the beginning of the National Board informational meeting that was led by Christy Hodges. I always try to welcome students or teachers who are interested in national boards, so I did that, and I attended a volleyball game against Bertie on Tuesday night, where we just have an awesome volleyball team. Thank you.
I got to see one of 18 holes of golf between two of the best high school golfers in the state. And this was a day before yesterday. And that's Catherine Schuster from First Flight High School, and Bailey Twyford from Currituck High School. And the match ended up, they each shot a 66, which is six under par.
Wow.
Which is incredible.
Yeah.
So, anyway, they'll be back to state championship again this year. I also got, went back to the Hunter Safety Field because Daniel Meads, who takes care of it, told me that he's made some improvements back there, and it's getting to look really nice. He's doing a quality job on that. And then to go back to the tourism, the meeting that we had with them, wrapping our buses with scenes from Currituck County would act as mobile billboards, because they go all over, the activity buses go all over the state, and they wouldn't be static billboards like we have here in the county. And then Mr. Kradak had a great idea, because we have these new ball fields over by the Extension Center, and he said, since a lot of our activity buses go to athletic events, what a better way for people to find out about those ball fields than to look at our activity buses, that may have a scene from them on there. So, great idea there. And with that.
I just couldn't stay silent the whole time.
Oh, so close.
It's about the activity buses. I've heard a couple of people say that the money that we're going to get from tourism is to pay for the buses.
No.
And, and that's not accurate. The buses come out of capital outlay, and once we get the contract finalized and the commissioners act on it, basically it says that they'll make sure that we at least have the $120,000 or $130,000 in capital outlay to pay the annual lease cost to the busing company. The tourism dollars are general fund, or will go into our general fund dollars, and we can earmark those for specific programs, or we could buy additional teachers, pretty much whatever we declare as the biggest need at the time in the school district. So, capital outlay takes care of the bus lease, and the tourism money takes care of education needs in the Currituck school district.
Yeah, and that would come out of the tourism promotional dollars, and not their building fund dollars, so. Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second, have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.